So the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And I have two changes. We are going to take item E under new business and move that to the March 21 meeting. And then we are also going to add two items to the personnel exhibit A for hiring. That'll be 160 and 161, which will be read into the motion.
I'll move to approve.
Have a motion in a second?
Motion by Madge, seconded by Bill. Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Moving right along, we have the recognitions. We have three different groups tonight.
We do have some different groups tonight. Thank you.
Couple of years ago.
From our band, we have Sofia Pierre.
Yeah.[166.43][166.43](applause)
A freshman from the orchestra, still from festival selecting 70. From the jazz band was Elizabeth Carpenter or Connor Manabuck here.[189.12][189.12](applause) And I do know that Jalen is here, and so representing to be quite.[212.98][212.98](applause)
Oh, he wants to sing.
A little bit. Come on. A little bit.
Educators, if you will, and knowing how special it is. We're going to move on to educators here.
We need about 20 of these, so come on, just take your time. Moving right along, the next item on the agenda is the reception of visitors. This is the part of the agenda where people that wish to address the board may address the board, so you can have your three minutes of fame. Okay. So we have no visitors who wish to speak this evening, so we'll move past the reception of visitors to the president's report, which will consist of committee reports. So the first item, first committee report is the insurance committee. Oh, yeah. All of you students want to leave. I know we're interesting, but you don't have to stay. You can stay. You're not going to hurt our feelings, but.
(laughter)
Yeah, I do too. I gotta go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just that we did have an insurance committee on February the 15th. We learned a lot about how the construction of the renewals happen every year collectively, and we're looking forward to our meeting March 15th, where we may get some preliminary look at the renewals for FY '18. So we learned a lot about how it's computed and how they construct that for us each year, and they're coming back in a couple of weeks to show us what next year looks like.
Okay. Thank you. And then there is the discipline committee, student handbook committee, excuse me, discipline slash student handbook committee.
Yeah, that was our annual meeting, and we were able to take the recommendations that came out of our code of conduct, discipline, recommendations specifically, the hate crime language. And at that meeting annually, we distributed the assignments to our administrators, who take over the different portions of our handbook. We'll make some modifications and edits to those chapters, minor mostly, over the next couple weeks. And in April, the board will see that handbook again for approval for '17, '18.
Okay. Then we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. In addition to the monthly attendance, suspension, and staffing reports, Carol, do we have any updates on your end?
Included in your board packet is both December and January's treasury reports for both general funds and the student activity funds. I did want to highlight just one piece of information for the board. To date, the state of Illinois still owes us about $3,956 from fiscal year '16 and $1,958, $1,958,000 in categorical aid for '17. So there's a lot of legislation going on right now, but the state continues to be severely behind in their payments. The other thing I wanted to bring to the board's attention is there's some TIF legislation out there. This is legislation that was out there previously. It is back in committee, but what it essentially says is that the city of Waukegan can take TIF money from any TIF in their area and move that money to another project. This is some legislation that Sue Simpson helped us get defeated last year. She thinks it's going to be defeated this year again, but it still is in committee. So, you know, when a TIF is, when you have a TIF, there's proceeds left over. We did get some of those proceeds, but instead of receiving that, they could move it to another project, like their Lakefront project. So very significant legislation for the board to be aware of, and I'll continue to monitor that. Rita Mayfield?
Who was it?
Rita Mayfield. Is very specific to Waukegan.
Yeah. So have we got any of our '17 payments from the state?
We have gotten none of our '17 payments.
Right.
So we are owed September 30th and December 31st.
Okay. Thank you.
Not the only ones that haven't gotten paid.
Nobody's gotten paid.
Okay, just making sure.
And in fact, the amount from '16, from the emails I'm getting from other districts, districts are owed hundreds of thousands of dollars from fiscal year '16. So we're lucky in the fact that we're only owed a very small amount. I mean, millions, in some cases millions, from '16.
A couple other just general items for the board. We do, spring sports are underway this week, so we've had a lot of activity at both campuses. And our basketball team is playing right now, so in their second game of the regional. We are, on the 22nd, we had our second parent diversity and inclusion committee meeting. Was really good. We got into some great conversations about what are some tangible things that we can be doing. Our student group is United and Form is what their name is. So they joined us, some of their leaders joined us and talked about collectively how we can share our mission of inclusion throughout the community. And so the two things that jumped out at us at our meeting were, number one, to possibly have a presence at Gurnee Days this summer to spread a positive message. And the second piece is not missing the opportunity during freshman orientation, right when school starts off with our ninth graders, to make sure we deliver the right message. You potentially use our student leaders to help us deliver that message. So the meeting was very, very powerful. We're meeting again April the 12th at 6:30 in the library here. We did, a few weeks back, have our annual appendix B committee. It's where recommendations are put forth, proposals are put forth, in between times of our collective bargaining agreement to talk about what activities should be sponsored by the district or thought about. And there are some that we had on our radar anyway, but just to give the board a little bit of flavor of some of those, one thing that we're supportive of is next year, FBLA is in a very critical year for us. We've got two very veteran sponsors who next year will be their last year. We want to make sure we have a good transition plan, so we are approving one more assistant sponsor for that club for next year to make sure that we debrief kind of where that goes after next year, so that will be very important. A number of sports teams talked about extra levels that may happen, and as I talked to the board about what we encouraged them to do was, we'll work with Carol on the budgeting part of it, but when the kids show up in the fall, if there's an extra level of 14 kids that are there at that point in time, those programs can come back to us and show us that the actual kids are there and keep in touch with coaches and try to create a more dynamic process for when the kids show up. How do we have that JV2 level, if you will, in swimming? Or a pure JV level in volleyball were the ones that came. Or even, we had talked about, we have a number of kids that are pole vaulters, and we had talked about making sure that there's enough supervision. And it's all good conversations about our activity program. The conversation circled back around to, let's try to create a method by which, right when the season is starting, if the kids are there, we have the coach ready to go, we bring it to the board and be fairly dynamic with that, rather than commit now. And if the kids aren't there, then we have a coach committed without the kids. So we're excited about that. And then, as the other thing I wanted to remind the board of, is next year lacrosse is an IHSA sport, and so they're already running, but we'll be bringing in-house one head and five assistant coaches for both of the girls' and boys' programs. Keep in mind, in the athletic, all those athletic activities, there's participation fees that go with all of those kids as well. So in terms of budgeting, there's two sides of that discussion. And on to my last item, which was the centennial report. I just wanted to remind the board that we're running close to the deadline for ordering books out there, so there's been a lot of emails going around. If you haven't ordered a book yet, there's still a few more days, and I know we've got over 200 sold, and we're continuing to sell them. We're not necessarily worried about it, but pre-orders are going to close relatively soon. And Thursday was moved from last week, but Thursday of this week is our open house out at transition. And so I think they're going to do a little bit of what we're currently doing in our current programming, and then also try to give a look ahead to some of the recommendations that came out of the presentation that was given to the board in January about our increased enrollment and change in programming. So we're excited about starting to talk about the changes out of transition on Thursday evening. It's 30 to 8:30 on Thursday. It was originally on our centennial calendar for last week, but they moved it back a week. And so, good thing is, if you didn't miss it, it's this Thursday, but if you're busy, sorry about that. And we have summer camps, so just a quick transition here. Tomorrow is March 1st, so that's generally where our summer camp registration has opened up. There's a whole catalog of activities that are online that we're excited to roll out registration for. Are we ready for them, Ms. Lobitz?
Yes.
We're all ready. Thanks, Kim. And there, we added a food service report to our program for tonight because we had some really good news and wanted to make sure we could share. That is our, Carol?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Rebecca Cohn, who's acting, she's, we have your, it's already on there. We have Rebecca Cohn from Quest, who oversees our operations and Nutria's operations. Mr. Jason Rosegay, who is our director of food service here at Warren, and Mr. Nick Sicaro, who is the president of Quest. Correct? Did I get that right? Um.
I'll be whoever I need to be, it's fine.
They've had a few changes at the topic for us, so I wanted to make sure I got their titles correct. So I asked them to come in because we just completed a food service survey with wonderful results. They will talk about that, and they'll also talk about how the year has gone and then what we'll look forward to for next year. So.
Carol?
Yeah. Well, you should have been here today because we had four food service committee meetings, two with the students and two with the staff, one at each campus. So I started eating pizza at 7:25 this morning and didn't finish eating until 2 o'clock this afternoon, so I've had a lot of food today, but, yes, it was delicious. So a lot of good comments today at our food service committee, and Jason's taking a lot of notes, and Rebecca, and very, very positive comments, but they will talk about that. So thank you so much for coming, and thank you for your presentation tonight.
Time to adjourn the meeting.
Jason, then just let me eat some turkey and cheese out of a.
(laughter)
Last year, the.
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 Until 2 o'clock this afternoon, so I've had a lot of food today. But, yes, it was delicious. So, a lot of good comments today at our Food Service Committee. And Jason's taken a lot of notes and Rebecca and very, very positive comments. But they will talk about that. So, thank you so much for coming and thank you for your presentation tonight.
Time to adjourn the meeting.
Last year...
When we...
Jason, what did you get there? Besides pizza?
You have a soup station?
We do have a soup station in both campuses.
Great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Bring some sushi next time. We'll like even better.
As a reminder to the board, we move that we have our program, our schedule of programs throughout our year. And we had this earlier in the year, but we didn't really have much to show, much data about how they're doing. So, we'll probably keep this date in February, if you will, for them to come back annually and kind of provide us some data. That was very helpful, just in terms of sales and things they're doing, so.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. We have bus leases. Carol?
Yes. We currently have 11 white vans that we use to transport students to private facilities. Those vans are now over 100,000 miles and they've been depreciated for five years, which means we don't get to claim them on the transportation claim anymore. Tina Delabre, our Director of Transportation, is here if you have any questions. But we're looking to lease eight regular 32-passenger passenger buses and one wheelchair bus to replace those. They're going to be much more flexible. We're going to save on maintenance. We're going to sell the vans. So, that'll cover really the first year of the two-year lease that we're asking for approval on. And I've given you copies of the bid documents, the proposal, and also Kelley Blue Book prices on the vans, just to give you an idea of what we might sell those for. So...
Carol, I had a question.
Sure.
How many people or students could go on them again?
Seven if you pack those vans. But with special needs students, you can't necessarily put seven students in a van.
Okay, yeah, so we are...
These are called 32-passenger, but they really...
They aren't going to hold for...
No. Right, that's correct.
So, are we going to be transporting more?
Yes, yes. So, here's our plan. Tina and I went through all our private facilities that we currently transport with taxi service. So, we're going to pick up those routes because we'll be able to transport more students, save on the contracted cost, also have a safer means of transportation because they're our employees and the security checks are all done and we train them. So, we always would prefer sending students in our vehicles rather than with a taxi, which is why we started the program in the first place. So, we've identified every facility that we would send one of these buses to along with, you know, some of the current transportation that we do with the white vans. So, we'll be picking up more students, in other words.
So, will we still be using... What do you...
Still do, because there are those facilities that we just can't service. You know, we may have one person going farther. And actually, I'm going to ask Tina to kind of answer that question because she's going to do a much better job of it.
To answer your question, our whole ultimately...
Almost.
I'm going off a three-year...
Actually, what we're replacing are the white vans that we purchased. And they're just well over 100,000 miles, so...
And are we getting rid of all 11?
We...
Because the document only shows seven.
We are keeping one because we're going to use it in transportation.
So, we're getting rid of 10.
We're selling one to Gurney 56. And I've offered one to Woodland. So, we would be theoretically selling nine right now.
And what's up with Woodland?
They're not sure if they want one. So, we may be selling that one, too.
Carol, are there going to be...
Oh, no, I don't... Tina, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're correct. Our whole hard to see and they'll be right there.
Okay. No more questions? We're going to go with nine? No, the sales isn't... Okay. All right, we need a motion.
I move to approve the two-year lease of nine 32-passenger Chevrolet Collins buses at an annual cost of $78,500 through Midwest Transit, Inc.
Second. London Drake?
The second one, Mr. Walls? Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, next item is the landscape maintenance bid.
On February 11th, we invited companies to bid on landscaping services for both campuses. The bid package was sent out to 15 companies and also put on our website. We had two bidders, three. One did a partial bid on just fertilization services. The lowest bidder was Balanced Environments, who's the company we use currently. They've done a very good job for us. I've included the bid tally sheet so you can compare the numbers. But Balanced Environments was significantly less. This would be a one-year lease with up to four annual renewals. And we are recommending and asking the board to award the bid to Balanced Environments beginning April 1st, 2017.
Are there any questions?
I have a question.
89.
It's in the third batch.
That's a typographical error, I'm sorry. You're welcome. Apology for the error.
All right, if there's no more questions, then we need a motion.
I move to approve the landscape maintenance bid and award Balanced Environments the bid beginning April 1st, 2017 for up to five years.
Second.
Walls, or Mr. Drake and then Mr. Walls was the second. Do you need more water?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes again. Yes.
Yes. Take a break, Jean. Yeah, we can go... Yeah, the next item is the solar energy presentation, so let's just move on to that and give Jean a chance to drink some water.
Well, we're, I think, very fortunate to have Mr. Kurt Hens from... Who's the Business Development Manager for Performance Services. And he's going to do a presentation on solar power at Warren Township High School. So... Presentation is in your docs, so you can follow that along. While they're setting that up, I also have some additional news. I've bought, brought up in the...
Tractor?
Again, you bought another tractor?
No, I'm safe there.
Traded it for a wedding gown.
I'm still safe there. The... We've received notice from Lake County, Lake County government that they will be having an open house on March 15th from, I believe, at 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning and then 4:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon. And they're going to be going over their amendments, or potential amendments, to the Unified Development Ordinance. And that specifically relates the amendment to put solar on property in Lake County. So, if anybody would like to attend, I'd be happy to send the information out to you.
You send that to me.
I will be happy to. And it's an open house format, so you can go talk to them. They'll do presentations. But it looks like the amendment's been drafted and we'll get a first look at it. And hopefully, the Building Commission group approves that. So, I'll send information to the board on that.
That'd be great.
4:00 to 6:00, I believe, so... Yes. Open house format, you can kind of go when you want.
Oh, the location will be...
It'll be at...
Libertyville.
It's actually in Libertyville.
Oh, it is.
At the new...
Permancy.
Right, the Permancy Center, the new facility down there. Oh, good timing.
Perfect.
Good timing.
Through that sidebar, there's a little arrow in the middle of the page. Down, 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 down.
There, there.
Right.
Well, the worst thing they ever did to Adobe is put that little sidebar thing in there. in there, most.
What do we need to scroll up? Oh, there we go.
So I'm serious.
First of all.
I mentioned a few things about what was taken off, so we're taking.
Hey, you have this in your, you do have this in your board packet.
Yeah, it's there, but I didn't.
Holy crap. We're not using the air conditioning, though, that's the difference.
There, there, I'm sure there are a lot of factors.
We're using our air conditioning, I was just kidding. That's 78, but it's on.
If you're, what you're saying is that the burner that you have has to stay.
If you have multiple, right. 355 watts, can it run with the current system of your?
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. As far as the panels, panel installation on both rooftops, both campuses, do you foresee, or have you given any thought to any other applications on either campus? And bigger question, what are the potential benefits if, for instance, a school district Mentioned the maximum amount is 2 million?
Two mega watts per meter.
Hey, how many, much acreage, generally speaking, would fulfill that?
The 100 acres also aren't fully paid for, so that has to be taken into a business plan equation, so it's, the 100 acres are not paid, they're not paid for. So you know that.
Are you familiar with what's being paid there?
At the end of this building, Enchin Pond, right at the end of this building.
That's what I was thinking of.
Right next to the track.
Right, because it's close to the building, so you don't have to.
Bid in April.
Five years, ox starts.
So what, what has to happen? Do we have to have a, we have to have a motion, a vote, or?
I don't know, no.
There's no vote.
It's kind of like a handshake.
No. I'm gonna, Kurt is gonna correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm gonna kind of summarize what, what has to happen and really what the board needs to do. We do not have to make any kind of commitment financially to this project at this time. What we, what the board, if they wanted to move forward and at least see what kind of SRECs we would get and see eventually if, you know, what the cost of the, the project would be and what the savings would be. Initially, we have to give Kurt and tell him to say, go out and get us some SRECs and... Kurt, who would be part of that analysis? But this is similar to a bid, so we go out to, you know, I put landscaping out to bid. Nothing happens until you approve the bid. So at this point.
He's just doing the preliminary work for three.
Right, right.
And then we do the contract after the fact.
Correct.
I didn't even touch on it, but that rough number is about 4.1.
All we have to do is say we'd like for him to look into it as a group, make a consensus as as we want to move forward.
I don't want to put you on the spot.
Hey, hey, I'm gonna put you on the spot, stop talking. Is that all we have to do?
The agenda says information on solar energy, so I don't think we can take action tonight on anything other than what happened, which was we got information on solar energy. So the next board meeting, if we're going to give direction, that's when we'd have to do. do it.
He's just gonna go out and gather more information. Correct.
What kind of. Eddie to do.
Right. We gotta look into the roofs, so I think we can say, look into the roofs. I think we can do that without a motion or anything, right?
Give some information for us. Thank you very much.
No, you don't go, you don't vote to.
Not a contract, so. I think we're good. All right, go for it.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay. That was very informative. So. That's solar energy. The next is the staffing plan.
Yeah, very quickly, board, there's a recommendation for an updated tentative FY18 staffing plan. I tried to bring the board's attention to two pieces that have changed in here. One is I've updated the staffing associated with our transition center for next year. So there were two additional staff that I put in there associated with that. The second piece is I've asked the board for some consideration and recommending that we hold off on reducing our guidance counselors until we can reduce two at the same time. We've got one retirement at the end of this year and one at the end of next year. We did a lot of processing and talking with our guidance counselors and social workers about change in programming, as well as the fact is from our parents' perspective, there will be a significant, if we do one in one year and one the next, there will be a significant difference in caseloads between buildings for that year. And because it's only one year, my recommendation is that we fill in after the retirement for this year and then after the 1718 school year, reduce by two at that point in time. Those are the two changes at this point in time that I'm recommending in the FY18 staffing plan.
Average of 60 kids.
And we, we talked through, we've talked through that with our counselors. Obviously, there, you know, we're, we showed the entirety of the enrollment decline and that we're trying to, we tried to go across departments in terms of our staffing reduction, but there's no question that they, they voiced that to us too. And we tried to get some numbers. That's what I did try to share with the board as well, our historical look at our caseloads. We've generally gone from 320 to 400, not that that's a good number, just we kind of did some, some history checking at that, just to, so we're there. Because one of their questions was, are we gonna cut any more in the future, which was a really good question on their end, right? And so based on the math that came out of it, we said, well, not until we hit an enrollment of 3,200 or less would we probably consider that, which at least let it know that it probably wasn't gonna happen anytime soon, so. But at least for right now, yeah. And the immediate recommendation is just to at least hold off for right now and reduce the two at the end of 1718. Absolutely, absolutely. The counselors have some of that, too. We also know that there's, there's differences in our programming right now and in our system than other schools are as well. So when we talk to our counselors about that, about our, so our counselors, generally speaking, don't see the nine through 12s, they don't see the incoming eighth grader through the post-secondary plan, right? So it's a little bit more condensed to the nine-10 deal and the 11-12 deal. And it doesn't make it better or worse. We have conversations about trying to be supportive at both campuses, that there are just different, different issues to deal with. We'll be more than happy to get some data on what other schools are doing. Some of it's history, some of it's probably financial. On our end, we've just tried to associate it to, in terms of the reduction to retirements we had in that department, and we were trying to equally, or not equally, but have retirements drive a little bit of what our staffing reduction was. And I don't know, ours are high. I like, we're, so.
I know they are, and I'd like to know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get, we will get, do a little homework on this.
Get across.
The other thing that I did write to the board was, it also gives, regardless of that, with the reduction, we, it will change our system, right? So right now, we've got a nice balanced system in terms of our teams that won't necessarily work as well when we reduce by a counselor at each building. And so the extra time will allow us to plan that out as well with our, with our counselors and our social workers.
Are we, are we talking about making these changes for FY18? Right?
The, in the original, so let me go back. In the original staff reduction plan, right, there was, it was associated with retirements that happened. There's a retirement that's scheduled at the end of this year. And in my original plan, we were going to reduce by one counselor this year. Then we have one more retirement at the end of 2018, and we were going to reduce by one more counselor at the end of 2018. We talked through that with the counselors and social workers and talked about the pros and cons and timing of all those things. So my immediate recommendation right now is that rather than plan on reducing any right now, we fill in for a year, right, and keep at 12 general lists in the district until FY, until the end of 2018. And at that point in time, we would reduce by two and there'd be balanced, but it'd be a balanced reduction, one at each campus.
We already have it in the plan to reduce one after this year and one after next year. The only change is we're gonna reduce, instead of reducing one this year, we reduce two at the end of next year. That's what he's asking.
Hire somebody temporarily, if I correct.
Sure, yeah.
I, I know, I, I get that, because I've, I went through this at Woodland, where we had declining enrollment. We talked about that in 2009, my very first board meeting, in April of 2009. So I, I guess for me, I, I understand that we have to do an alignment and I understand the whole fiscal thing, but I'm never in favor of cutting staff first, because they're so critically important to what we do. That's what we do. We need teachers to educate. So I don't understand why we can't look at some other things before you go there. That's, you know, for example, the 100 acres of vacant land that we played debt service on, that we've been paying since 2009. And I'd like to look at those areas first before, and I, I know that there has to be some realignment. I've been through that before. But I just think that we need to look at other things, too. And I put more of this on your predecessor, Dr. Algrim, because she was here in 2009, and there were newspaper articles about the largest feeder school, Woodland, cutting 42 and a half positions. And at the same time, Warren was talking about building a third campus, which any reasonable person would say, that doesn't even make any sense. The largest feeder school is projecting a decline in enrollment, which they're still talking about, and they're going through another realignment. But over here, Warren was gonna spend 8.4 million, which one newspaper article said, or 8 million in another, to build a third campus, which was never gonna be needed. And so that expenditure, year after year, should have been taken into account, and so we wouldn't be looking at cutting teachers. I guess my whole thing is, why are we looking there? Can we look at something else? That's just my.
So the immediate move does what you say?
Pardon?
The immediate move, change to this plan, does what you say. We're delaying, we're delaying.
Right, I'm just talking overall.
You're just trying to make your point about the real estate, which you've made 35 times. We all got it. So Carol, just for sake of argument, so the debt service extension, is that paid out of operations that we're paying on the real estate right now?
Pardon?
Okay, thank you. Okay, so. About this, what we're talking about right now? Wisconsin?
Yes, in Wisconsin. And so they see.
Talking about in this plan adds two teachers to the transition program, and we're bang, bang off. We're, we're talking about bringing another one back at the Oak Plain campus. That's a net increase of three, the way I understand it.
From our, from what was in the original?
So we're going up, not going down. And.
The agenda item we're talking about is the staffing plan.
Right, exactly.
Not the 100 acres. I understand your point.
It's $800,000 in debt service every year.
I understand your point.
Since Tuesday.
We're talking about the staffing plan.
Right.
The change we're being asked to approve is a net increase of three over the original 2018 plan.
Yes or no?
Yes.
That's correct. I agree with you.
That is the agenda item. I'd like to stick to that, and I'd like to clarify, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about increasing the number of teachers, which is the point you're trying to make.
Right, but I was clarifying.
I understand.
Catherine, we got it.
I understand.
We got it.
I'll move to approve the fiscal year 18 tentative staffing plan as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. E has been removed. We'll move on to the approval of the payment of the bills. There's no questions? We need a motion? Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the hiring recommendations for Exhibit A. So I move to approve Exhibit A, personal recommendations, 154 through 159, and 160, Pat Keely promotion, and the 161, Pat Keely new hire.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Proceed. He's recusing. Just put recuse down, it's fine.
Yes.
I'm recusing.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Next item is the regular meeting minutes of February 7th and executive sessions, excuse me.
I'll move to approve. Session minute 17.
February 7th, you said, or?
I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes 7th, 2017.
There you go. Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Stain, I was not.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll get on the right. Now, I'll move to approve the special meeting minutes and the executive session minutes of February 21st, 2017.
Second.
Roll call.
I abstain, I was not present.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Yes.
I will abstain, as I was not present.
Yes. Does a good job, no doubt. Okay, then I move, we adjourn the meeting.
Walls.
Campbell.
Yes.
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 Yes. Good night, everyone.